Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Luck.
Aye.
Motion carries. Then we have the review of checks issued from Finance and Central Services and from Human Services. Is there a motion to approve?
Moved.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Luck. Is there a second by Commissioner Schulte? Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Then we have approval of the minutes from our November 10th County Board meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner West. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamash. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. We have one item under Chair's remarks today, and it is to recognize the very hard work of this year's United Way and Community Shares Campaign. This heroic effort was co-chaired this year by Bobby Kohler in Administration and Andrew Precker from our Social Services Department. Welcome to both of you, and on behalf of the Board, we want to thank you so much for stepping up to take on this challenge and continuing to be so creative to raise money for people in the community in need. And I can say as a recipient of a pie in the face that it was a pretty sweet campaign.
It sure was.
So welcome.
Thank you.
Good morning, ma'am Chair and members of the County Board. My name is Bobby Kohler. I'm a Senior Accounting Clerk in County Administration, and this is my co-chair, Andrew Precker, who is a social worker in our Human Services Department. We are the co-chairs of this year's Anoka County Combined Charitable Campaign Drive, and our campaign ran from September 21st through October 5th, and we raised eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. I would like to thank our canvassers and volunteers and our Payroll Department for all their hard work in this campaign, and I would like to thank the county employees for their cash donations and those who donated by payroll deduction because we raised seventy-seven thousand, seventy-nine dollars and eighty and eight cents by payroll deduction. This is an incredible amount raised by county employees. It shows how much Anoka County employees care.
And I'd just like to continue on with saying some more thanks to people that were involved. Pentair and Cisco donated all the food for our food events, so thank them. Also to the local businesses in our community that donated stuff for our charitable campaign for the Silent Auction and our other events in the community. We've sent out letters thanking them and letting them know how much we appreciate their donations and their help for this campaign. We'd also like to thank each and every one of you for allowing us to do this, and then also your willingness to be involved with the Pie in the Face contest. That, I think, I think people really enjoyed that and got a lot of enjoyment out of maybe seeing a few of you guys get hit with a pie, so thank you. And then also, I just wanted to personally thank a few people, and I'm probably going to leave a few off the list, but Dave Schwank and Eric Thorson for helping out with emails and the Silent Auction. Martha Weaver helped out sending out a ton of emails for us. Jerry Hennig in the Payroll Department did a ton of work down there with all the payroll forms and stuff. And then Mike Roth, who helped us set up a lot of the meetings and stuff like that. And then the most thanks, I think, needs to go to Bobby because she was really the actual only chair in this. I kind of took a backseat role, and Bobby did the majority of the work, so I just want to make sure she gets recognized for the work that she did too.
Well, just appreciate the incredible efforts. I know it's a lot of extra time and effort and hard work on the part of not only you, but all of the canvassers and everybody else who participated. And just appreciate the generosity of our employees who each and every year see the needs within the community and are willing to really dig into their own pockets in order to contribute to make life better for folks in the community who are less fortunate. So just really appreciate all of your hard work and effort. And I just have to say that I was at the Adoption Awareness Month event on Saturday and met a new employee who just commented she recognized me by the person getting the pie in the face, which is kind of a fun. So again, really appreciate your creativity and all of your hard work and effort, so I think they deserve a round of applause. Thank you very much. We will now move on to Management Committee Report. Commissioner West.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The items on the regular agenda are informational, but we have two on an additional agenda. The first item, one A is a new position from Parks and Community Services. It's a one FTE Park Services Coordinator, Grade 10. And this is a position that I think is really going to help our customer relations in the parks. This person's going to be available at the busy hours during the use of the parks, and I think it's a very good decision. In fact, I'd like to move it.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Further discussion?
Ma'am Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Cardiac.
I was just coming, this has kind of been vetted through the Parks System Management Committee. I had an opportunity to see this and review it. I'm very pleased that, I think it's a useful thing to do. I would say that we are also, at the same time, moving the concept of the Ranger Unit, which many times kind of maybe has kind of a law enforcement flair to it, which we are not. Moving it to, I think, its visitor services. It's kind of a kinder and gentle field, the park services, which is what we do, greeting our customers and taking care of local interest and making sure things are operationally flowing well, so that's kind of part of this discussion as well. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Cardiac.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Luck.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
Item one B is consider recommending approving proposed revisions to the county personnel rules and regulations relating to the following four items. And this is a housekeeping-type item. I'll just quickly, for those who are watching, change all reference from Human Services, Human Resources to Employee Relations. We're just renaming that department. Section nine Compensation Plan, exceptional service pay has made adjustments in that. The employee benefits retiree benefit limitations, and an appendix, Anoka County Access Control and Security Policy has been adjusted.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
And Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner West. Moving on to Transportation Committee Report. Commissioner Schulte.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We held our Transportation Committee meeting on Monday, November 16th. Now we have a number of items for consideration this morning. First, in the Transit Department, the committee recommends approval of a resolution accepting gifts received for the annual med-length volunteer recognition luncheon that was held on October 13th of this year.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll offer the resolution.
Okay, resolution's been offered by Commissioner Schulte. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Luck.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cardiac.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
And Madam Chair, I'll refer back to that just for a second to like to personally extend a thank you to all those businesses and veterans divisions, whether it's Legion clubs or VFWs. They donated a considerable sum of money to make sure that these volunteers are properly thanked for all those drives, for driving those people to and from their appointments. And it was great. It was a good, good event to be at. We all had an opportunity to speak to some of those drivers and thank them for their multiple years of service. But again, thank you not only to the drivers, but really to the businesses that contributed to make the recognition event happen. Next, we have under the Highway Department, the next five items will all be subject to authorization, authorizing the Chair of the County Board and the County Administrator to execute these agreements, subject to review by the County Attorney to form a legality. So I won't repeat that on the next five items. The committee recommends approval of a resolution entering into a local road improvement program, or LRIP agreement, with MMDOT for the reconstruction of Highway 10 and the Armstrong Boulevard interchange.
Okay, is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer it.
Resolution has been offered by Commissioner Luck. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Luck.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cardiac.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
Next, the committee recommends approval to enter into a joint powers agreement with the City of Andover for the reconstruction of Bunker Lake Boulevard and the Cities of Andover and Ham Lake.
Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Gamash, second by Commissioner Brassad. Further discussion?
Ma'am Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
I'll just come, this has been a long time, talked about project, and I'm sure that we're anxious to see it move forward. It needs some improvement and that, and it's overdue. There's many pieces that come to intersect each other, crossings, railroad crossings, people walking around, lights, and a curve in the road yet, but I'm hopeful that we'll be very happy with the outcome.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Ma'am Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Gamash.
Thank you. I also, we've been looking at this project quite some time since I was Mayor of Andover, and I think beyond the tunnel, which is going to be nice, that goes under bunker to get into the park from the north side of the road, there's the, where we're taking out a lot of that big curve around Bunker Lake, which has always been kind of a dangerous area. As a matter of fact, on my way hunting a few weeks ago, that was the only deer I saw crossing right in front of me. Luckily, he got into the woods before I got there. But it's going to be really nice, and it's going to be a big benefit to the people that live along those areas, get in and out in a safer manner, so I'm looking forward to it.
Great. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Luck.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cardiac. Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
Now, this next item's going to sound nearly familiar to the previous one, but the committee recommends approval to enter into a joint powers agreement with the City of Ham Lake for the reconstruction of Bunker Lake Boulevard and the City of Andover and Ham Lake.
A motion to approve?
No moves.
Moved by Commissioner Brassad. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Cardiac. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Luck.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cardiac.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
And lastly, on our action items, the committee recommends approval to enter into a license agreement with McDonald's Corporation for certain parking lot and lighting improvements within Anoka County Highway Right-of-lick.
Is there a motion? Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Luck. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schulte. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Luck.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cardiac.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Madam Chair, the only thing I'll point out under informational items is the consideration of our legislative platform. You'll see that it's very similar to last year with some minor changes that we'll go over in the weeks and months to come. Take a look at that when you get a chance. With that, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Schulte. Moving on to Finance and Capital Improvements Committee Report. Commissioner Luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Finance and Capital Improvements Committee Chair, Committee, rather, met on November 17th. We came away with two action items. The first of which is that the committee recommends the County Board approve the renewal of contract 2013-0356B/C003198B with perfection plus cleaning. This is a renewal, and the, I believe the contract amount is still the same as it was before, so no increase in costs there. They've done a good job for us, and we want to continue working with them.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Moved by Commissioner Luck. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cardiac.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Luck.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
Ma'am Chair, the second item is the committee recommends the County Board approve issuing a purchase order to Egan through the Anoka County Building Automation System Master Contract C00432 for the building automation upgrades for the West Courthouse air handling systems, which are an antiquated system right now. They're not in line with the other systems that we have, and the current systems that we have are computer-controlled, and you can change them when need be, as opposed to having to send somebody out there and pneumatically change it. And they are ending their, coming to their end of life, so this is a $60,000 project. It is included in the court's remodel project, so now is the time to do this, and...
Move. All move.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Cardiac. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schulte. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Cardiac.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Luck.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Ma'am Chair, the rest is for informational purposes. That concludes my report.
Okay. Moving on to Human Services Committee Report. We have a number of items on the consent agenda, essentially contract renewals from January 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2016. Unless someone wants to pull something out separately, I will move approval of the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
And that's our roll call vote.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Luck.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cardiac.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under Community Health and Environmental Services, the first item is to consider recommending the County Board enter into contract C00004605. It's a renewal with Dr. John Les for physician services to inmates at the Anoka County Jail and Correctional Facilities, and that's at a 3% increase for physician services during regular hours and $300 per onsite procedure during after-hours call-in services. And we just have been very appreciative of the work that he has done. Many times, he's able to do things onsite, sutures and other things that normally we would have to bring people out, which adds an additional expense, so really has been great cost savings. The next item is to consider recommending the County Board enter into contract renewal with Nystrom and Associates for psychiatric and consultation services to inmates at the Anoka County Jail and Adult Correctional Facilities at the rate of $244.36 per hour from January 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2016. And then we have consider recommending the County Board enter into a contract renewal with Fifth Avenue Dental for dental services at the Anoka County Jail and Adult Correctional Facilities, and there's a list of procedures there that the price increases range from a 0% increase and, for the case of a 28% increase for emergency treatment. And then the next item is to consider recommending the County Board enter into a contract with the Maternal Infant and Early Childhood Home Visiting Expansion Grant Agreement Amendment with the Minnesota Department of Health in an amount of $472,875, extending the term through February 28th, 2017. And I will move items two through five. Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Further discussion? I would just comment that we're appreciative to have providers who are willing to go and work in the facilities. It is not always an easy, easy situation, and we're just very appreciative that we have great providers who provide that service. And that's roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Luck.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cardiac.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye. Motion carries. Under Social Service, the first item is to consider recommending the County Board enter into a contract with Resiliency and Health Institute for Parenting Assessments from January 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2016. There is a new rate for parental assessments for case plan development. We have a 0% increase for the full parenting assessment, and then $150 per hour for court testimony and case preparation. That's a new rate. The next item is to consider recommending the County Board enter into contracts for parent support outreach, for family strengths and needs assessments, and for attempted family contact and failure to engage those rates, and those are with Family Wise, Alexandra House, and People, Inc. And then the next item is to consider recommending the County Board enter into a contract with the interdepartmental agreement with the Anoka County Community Corrections for Juvenile Non-Secure Shelter and Residential Treatment, again, for the entire year of 2016, and it's $190 per day for non-secure, $190 per day for secure detention, and $222 per day for secure sex-specific programs. And as those of you who sit on the Central Juvenile Center Board recognize that we set a rate for other counties that participate in those programs, and that rate is consistent with what we charge our other departments as well.
Move six, seven, and eight.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Luck.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cardiac.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item under Community Corrections is to consider recommending the County Board enter into a contract renewal with Empower Therapeutic Services for in-home family-based therapy counseling at $99.28 per hour, and life skills management training at $67.42 per hour, again, from January 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2016. Approval is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Luck.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cardiac.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is Resolution 2015 HS24, the Economic Assistance Bill, and I'll offer that resolution. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Luck.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cardiac.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Motion carries. Then the final item is Resolution 2015 HS25, accepting gifts for Anoka County Human Services, and again, we just appreciate the generosity of businesses and folks within the community. And I will offer that resolution. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cardiac.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Luck.
Aye.
Motion carries. That concludes my report. I'll move on to Intergovernmental and Community Relations Committee Report. Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We met on November 19th, and we have one action item. This deals with six county contracts, or six other counties, contracts with our medical examiner's office. It's Isani County, McLeod County, Meeker County, Malax County, Sibley County, and Todd County. The term of the contract is from January 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2022.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
It was moved by Commissioner Gamash. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schulte. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Cardiac.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Luck.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Now we'll move on to Property Records and Taxation Committee Report. Commissioner Cardiac, and just want to let you know ahead of time that we have a time-certain public hearing at 10 o'clock, so I may end up interrupting your report.
What are you suggesting I go on?
Not suggesting that, Commissioner. I just know there's a number of items on your report, and just wanted to give you a heads up that I may interrupt you.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. And we did have, the committee did meet recently. There were several action items brought forward today. Property records, always an interesting and complicated place, but this is a situation here where an individual lost his house to forfeiture. He wishes to repurchase his property. I think we nearly always supported this. This is a house in Columbia Heights that he would like to reacquire. The record process, he has to keep the taxes current, and over, I think, a five-year period, make repayments if any money's due. And I desire, we desire, I think, to redo this, so I'd like to move, Madam Chair, that we move on item one regarding repurchase to Mr. Bartlett.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded by Commissioner Gamash. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Luck.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cardiac.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
Ma'am Chair, item two, as I recall, we some time ago kind of reclassified some properties and declared them nonconservation, recognizing that several of our municipal jurisdictions may have interest in them. This, I think, is a taker in that discussion. This is city blame, wishing to take advantage of opportunity, and we desire to convey that property to them.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner West for their discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Item two, City Columbia Heights seemed to have had a proliferation of elections recently, but this is the one that they desire to utilize, as so many school districts are, the services of the Anoka County Election Services, and this is simply a contract that would enable them to do that, that relationship with us through elections to support their cause. I will move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Luck.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cardiac.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item.
And for, Madam Chair, I think Anoka County is positioning itself to move toward a land sale of about 20 parcels of property. This resolution does describe the classification of nonconservation property for land sale purposes. You'll see this sale coming up in a number of months, as I recall. I'll offer it.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner Cardiac. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You'll see this sale coming up in a number of months, as I recall, I'll offer it.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner Cordiak. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
I'm hurrying, Madam Chair. Item number four, the, I'm along with that early action, we have to engage that relationship with the state of Minnesota, where the resolution in 2015 PR2T30 requests the Department of Natural Resources also approve a sale, land sale in 2015, I'll offer it.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner Cordiak. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And lastly, we recognize that whenever someone's home property is divided into two different school districts, because of curious boundary lines sometimes, they can make an election as to which school system they choose to participate in, regardless of the amount of property in one or the other. As I recall, this one is in Commissioner Subaraja's territory, this is a family that has made that election and selection, and that's what item six is about.
Okay, and I will offer the resolution. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thirty seconds to spare.
Yes, see that? All right. We will go ahead and... Commissioner Brassad has the public safety report, and...
I can't do it in intensive.
We can't. We have a time certain public hearing at 10 o'clock, which will be in, it's official now. I'll go ahead and turn it over to County Attorney Palumbo.
Good timing, Madam Chair, it's just like the NFL on Sunday. Right on time, thank you. At this point, we are convening a hearing to obtain comments concerning Anoka County user fees, and the clerk should take note that notice of this particular public hearing was published in Anoka County Record on November 6, 2015. At this time, I would call upon Budget Director Patty Hedrick to come forward and address the county board on this topic. Ms. Hedrick, please.
Thank you, Mr. Palumbo, Commissioners. I'm Patty Hedrick, Budget Director for Anoka County. Section 373.41 provides that our county board can, after a public hearing, establish and charge fees. These fees must represent actual costs. Today, we have just a few fees that are changing. The first one is from the sheriff's office. Gun permits for those actively serving in military will be reduced to $10. We have a range of fees from 50 to 75, and each permit will be $10. In highway, road salt bunker, will go from $70.23 to $72.22. Road salt and out shop will have 79.29 going to 81.28. In parks, we have a few new fees. We have a special use permit for $25. Park maintenance assistance for large events will go to $50. Parking assistance for large events is $100. Our current fee for bunker beach water park season pass is 80 for guests over 48 inches and 55 for guests under 48. That will change to 90 for guests over 48 and 65 for guests under 48. Chamonix Golf Course green fees range from $14 to $20. The new fee will be $15 to $21. Our green fees will be, are currently $20 to $32. They will increase from $22 to $34. Social Services has attached a schedule of costs, and that schedule is attached, and I won't go into the details. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Hedrick, by the board? Okay, at this point, any members of the public that wish to come forward and address the county board on the matter spoken, concerning Anoka County user fees? Any member of the public wish to come forward at this point? And I will ask a third time, any member of the public wishing to come forward to address the county board on this matter. Hearing none, at this point. Madam Chair, I would then close the public hearing and turn the matter back to you, as Chair.
Thank you very much. We will go ahead and take up Resolution 2015-146 relating to fees for various county services, including the fees related to permits and licenses and sales of materials to the public and other governmental agencies. Is there an offer of the resolution?
Madam Chair, I'll offer it.
Okay, resolution's been offered by Commissioner Cordiak. Further discussion?
It is common, Madam Chair, these have been vetted through a variety of different committees, and I think that we've had numerous opportunities to see this, and they're straightforward, driven by real costs or other needs, so I fully support this.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you very much. And then we have a time certain public hearing at 10:15, so we will need to wait to call that. So we'll go ahead and move on to Public Safety Committee Report. Commissioner Brassad?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The committee recommends approval and execution of the snowmobile safety enforcement grant between the state of Minnesota through its Commissioner of National Natural Resources and the Anoka County Sheriff's Office. The total obligation of the state will not exceed $13,368, and that will be divided between the state fiscal year 2016 and the fiscal year 2017.
Move it.
Okay, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad, further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Aye.
Commissioner Subaraja?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item.
The committee recommends approval of Resolution 2015-PS12 for the 2015 State of Minnesota Federal Boating Safety Supplemental Equipment Grant Agreement. The total obligation of the state will not exceed $7,500.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer it.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner Gamache. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Aye.
Commissioner Subaraja?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Aye.
Commissioner Subaraja?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that concludes my report. Thank you, Commissioner Brassad. Commissioner Cordiak, you're in the same situation as the previous time? Recycling and Resource Solutions Committee Report. Yes, you do have seven minutes, so I probably will not end up interrupting you.
We can, Madam Chair, thank you very much. There are three items for our consideration today. One of them is a change of permit by rural for the borderlines, I think it's in the vicinity of what we sometimes have known as Schwarzmans, they are a good partner in the area, they have been doing a fine job. All they're looking to do here is add, I think, it's furniture to their collection and recycling processes. I think it changes their title a little bit, but none of their other licenses, so I think that's fully acceptable, the recycling and disposing of furniture. I will offer, move on item one.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
The final item is that the committee recommends approval of Resolution 2015-PS16, accepting dedicated donation from Bicycle Alliance of Minnesota in the amount of $200 to support the Anoka County Sheriff's Office Explorer Unit.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer it.
Been offered by Commissioner Gamache. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Aye.
Commissioner Subaraja?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Aye.
Motion carries. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Commissioner Brassad. Commissioner Cordiak, you're in the same situation as the previous time? Recycling and Resource Solutions Committee Report. Yes, you do have seven minutes, so I probably will not end up interrupting you.
We can, Madam Chair, thank you very much. There are three items for our consideration today. One of them is a change of permit by rural for the borderlines, I think it's in the vicinity of what we sometimes have known as Schwarzmans, they are a good partner in the area, they have been doing a fine job. All they're looking to do here is add, I think, it's furniture to their collection and recycling processes. I think it changes their title a little bit, but none of their other licenses, so I think that's fully acceptable, the recycling and disposing of furniture. I will offer, move on item one.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Madam Chair, item number two, we look forward to continuing our relationship with WasteWise. They have been working through Chamber of Commerce in our business community and enhance a wide variety of recycling and a wide variety of businesses for the most part. They have come through, the committee numerous times, talked about their progress, we've been happy with their outcomes, they're working on everything from local business, recycling to organics. And this is fully covered by our solid waste fees, and I would like to, yes, I'll move item number two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schulte. Further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schulte?
Having sat on the Recycling and Resource Solutions Committee and having dealt with WasteWise, not only there, but through my business in Coon Rapids, they're really on top of their game. They do a good job, they're reaching out to businesses, helping them recycle, and showing them how to do it without spending a fortune, sometimes even saving money in the recycling process. Having them as a partner to reach out for us really breaks the ice, because when people see government coming, they get a little nervous. When they see the Chamber of Commerce coming, they're a little more open-armed about that. So I do agree that WasteWise is a good group, I'm glad we're renewing this contract.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll comment, I'll give him credit where credit's due. Commissioner Schulte, well, he's the gas station guy with greasy fingers taking your mufflers off of your car. He's fully vetted in recycling, and I'm rather surprised, but on the extent and level that his employees go to dealing with parts, I'll bear be kind, to make sure that they're properly handled, I give him great credit for that, and he really gets it. I wish everybody did. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Cordiak, and I will say that our success rate last year, we just did some math, 88% of the product that comes through our shop is recycled. So we've got 12% to go, but we think we can get there.
Congratulations, thank you.
Fantastic. Well, Commissioner, I was pleased to see even in my local newsletter that they're trying some things, hopefully with organics in the lineal community as well, so it's kind of fun to see some of these new things popping up. All right, we'll do, roll call vote on that item.
Oh, thank you.
Commissioner Subaraja?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item.
Ma'am, lastly, this is an item that's coming up for numerous years, this is the relationship that we have for providing funding through predominantly SCORE, to serve the needs of our various municipal recycling centers. You may have seen it in your Dropbox, but it's kind of a large sheet, there's more lines on it than you probably want to know, but we've been doing this for many years, it always gets tweaked a little bit, but the relationship that we have gives everybody some base funding, it provides additional funding based upon households, so communities of larger size get some additional dollars and smaller ones. We're providing money in this grant for organics and multi-use residential issues, which are always a problem, park and event collections of varying kinds, various municipal events and so on. So I think it's been fully vetted with the committee, we've done it pretty much for years and years. It's funded within our SCORE funding, it's solid waste fees, so I would, I find, and the committee found support for this, and I would like to move on item three, Madam Chair.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner West, further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Madam Chair, that concludes my report. I'll let the next guy worry about the clock.
All right, we will move on to item number 11. Consider approving Resolution 2015-147, establishing compensation expense amounts for Anoka County employees, unclassified employees appointed division managers, department heads, elected officials, and county commissioners for 2016. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer it.
Resolution's been offered. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Aye.
Commissioner Subaraja?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is item number 12. Consider reappointing Dr. Roger Warner to the Community Corrections Advisory Board representing education for a two-year term expiring October 2017. And I will move approval, is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And we have a, nothing else on our agenda other than the time certain public hearing at 10:15, so we will just need to wait until it's officially 10:15, it is now 10:14, so...
Madam Chair, I could take this time just to remind the Commissioners that the trustees of the HRA will meet right after we finish this meeting.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Now we will turn it over to County Attorney Palumbo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we will convene a hearing to receive public testimony on proposed changes to the county's capital improvements program for a five-year period from 2016 to 2020. to the county's capital improvements program for a five-year period from 2016 to 2020. I would have the clerk take note that notice of this public hearing has been published in Anoka County Record on November 6, 2015. At this time, I would ask Budget Director Patty Hedrick to come forward once again and address the board on these proposed changes.
Thank you, Mr. Palumbo and commissioners. For the record, I'm Patty Hedrick, Budget Director for Anoka County. Today, we're just going to talk about the proposed budget for the capital improvement plan for 2016. Again, this is just a proposed budget. Our total expenditures are planned to be $54,347,219. The majority of these projects are in Roden Bridge, however, I will highlight other large projects. Under building and equipment, we are budgeted to spend over $10 million. The biggest project in this area is, of course, the quartz remodel. It's an extensive remodel that is starting to take place now and will continue in '16. There are also some elevators, carpet replacement, roofs, et cetera, that are typical maintenance. Under the library, we have a very small amount this year, $253,000, and that's just for our parking lot, and we're also finishing our radio frequency identification project. Under Roden Bridge, we have several large projects. The first, CASA 116, Bunker Lake Boulevard reconstruction, Crane and Jefferson. Second is CASA 11, Foley Boulevard reconstruction, Egrit to Northdale. We have railroad grade separation projects. This will involve the last 22 county railroad at grade crossings, and that would be $7.6 million. CASA 23, Interchange, I-35, $2.4 million. This is an area that continues to grow. CASA 12, realignment at Sunset. This project includes construction of new roundabouts at the intersection of CASA 12, and this is $2 million. We also have a large project, $1.2 million, at CASA 9, which is Lake George Boulevard and Viking Boulevard. And our last big project, I believe, is CASA 23 access modifications, and that's $1.25. We also do have typical, every year we put in quite a sum for bridge and road preservation, and this year that sum is $8 million. We do have more details on all these projects at the finance office if anyone would like more details and more complete project descriptions. Moving on, information and technology. We have a total budget of $6.75. Our largest project is a unified communications technical infrastructure. This will put us in the modern century and will have voiceover IP. We also have a large project for the sheriff. At this point, we were just replacing squad cameras. We had considered replacing our, implementing body worn cameras. That has currently been moved to '17. And last, we have Parks and Recreation. The total projects are $2.7. Several of these are funded by grants. Our largest project is Coon Lake County Park. We are redoing the parking lot and the restroom facilities. Are there any questions?
Any questions by members of the county board from Ms. Hedrick? Yes. Commissioner Cordiak.
Can I be reminded under information management, the United Communications Tech Infrastructure, is that the phone system? It is, it is.
Correct.
Which is a big transition, but yeah.
That's correct. We currently have several large old systems that are on their last leg, and this will be unifying everyone on the same system.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Gamache?
Yes, Ms. Hedrick, you mentioned in Parks and Rec that a lot of the funding was through grants. So if I look at, let's say, the Coon Creek County Park, is that $670,000 including the grants, or is that just what the, is that not the total? Just kind of curious.
Maybe Mr. Vandilinde would like to explain his grants and reimbursements. I have it too if he can't, but I think he can.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Commissioner Gamache, the Coon Lake County Park project is a county-funded project. There are no grant funds in that project. The grant fund that used to exist for county-level funding no longer is in place at the DNR, so we are self-funding that one.
Okay.
All of the other projects, I believe, on the list for Parks and Recreation for next year, with the exception of Charming Golf Course, are all grant-funded projects. So I would say at least 90% of the costs are probably colored by grants.
Okay, so if I look at the Rice Creek one, and it says $350,000, that includes the grant as well?
That does.
Okay.
That is exclusively grant-funded.
Okay, that's all there's.
All of the other ones are exclusively grant-funded.
Okay, I wasn't sure if we included the actual grants in this budget portion or not for, just for my information, but thanks.
When we look at the total cost, it's, the total cost of the project, several have reimbursements from state, federal.
Okay.
But we don't discuss that at this meeting, but we have those details if you'd like.
Okay, well, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? And for the record, Division Manager John Vandilinde who offered also comments. Okay. Any other questions by the board? Okay, at this time, I would invite members of the public who wish to come forward and give testimony regarding the proposed changes, capital improvements program. Okay, please come forward and identify yourself, sir.
Hi, my name is Mel Anrude. I'm from the city of Ham Lake, and I think I was the only public person at the committee that considered the changes to this and brought it forward. Commissioner Look, $54 million, that's a lot of money. And I know that it was published, but you set the date for the meeting at that meeting. I had a tough time finding it on the website, and I understand Mr. Schulte found it. I didn't find it. I came to the building here and looked for it and couldn't find it. It turned out that the agenda was posted, it's a two-sided agenda, but only one side was posted. I asked and they weren't absolutely sure. I finally called your office and your assistant, and I wish I remember her name, but I don't.
Diane.
Diane, she was very helpful, and she made sure that I understood it was here, that this was going to happen. With that much money, it just seems like it, you even mentioned at the meeting that nobody ever shows up at these things. That might be part of the reason. It's tough to know when these things are. I don't know what you can do to make it clear or make it more easy for people to know, but oh, I think it would be, really be helpful. I think more people would, might be interested than they're talking about $54 million. I have a couple of questions. I don't know if you want all of them to come from me right away, but we'll start. Commissioner Sevraja, you, the $54 million, most of it has to do with bonding. And you mentioned at the committee meeting, the fact that the bonding rating had been, we lost our AAA bonding rating, and you explained it there. I'm just wondering, I must admit, I didn't understand at all because you talked about demographics in the county, and I wonder if you could explain that to more public than just one.
Absolutely.
Ma'am Chair, yes. If you wish to proceed, I mean, generally, this is just for a comment. It's not generally a question and answer, but I will leave that to your discretion if you wish to do so.
Sure, certainly happy to do that. I know that standard and pores actually change their criteria, so it is much more like Moody's criteria in that it takes the demographics of the county into consideration, looking at income level and some of those criteria, which were not necessarily part of the criteria that they looked at as standard and pores in the past. That being said, even though our AAA bond rating was dropped, we actually moved from having stable financial management to strong financial management. So certainly, even though there were changes in the rating itself, the actual management of the county improved significantly based on their comments.
Okay.
I understand that the body cameras for the sheriff's office was taken out of the capital improvement budget, as I mentioned. I wonder if anyone wants to explain why that, why we don't want to get ahead of the curve there rather than behind, especially with the things that we're seeing now in North Minneapolis. Wouldn't that be a good expenditure, especially when interest rates are probably about as low as you're ever going to get them right now?
I don't know if anyone wants to handle that. Mr. Anrude, I think that was a decision made by the sheriff at this time, based on policy, not necessarily based on finances. Being very familiar with the body camera issue myself, as chair of the County Attorneys Association, there are lots and lots of issues, and certainly my work with the sheriff will have to continue on developing policies around that. So I expect that was moved into, I believe, the '17 capital improvements. So this year, it was not based on finances, it was based on good, sound public policy and how to carry those forward, that I'm aware of.
The only other area that I remember from the committee meeting was the $300,000 that is put in budget for moving people within the building. And there was some discussion about how close the committee was going to be watching individual movements. I wonder if someone could explain to the public how, you know, what that is, what that's about and how that's going to be worked.
I get it.
Seems like kind of micromanagement to me, but I, you know, I don't understand your individual, you know, concerns here.
Okay, I appreciate that. Commissioner Look, did you wish to address that question?
Yes, thank you. I can touch on that issue. First of all, it's a budget, so we're identifying all costs in that budget. And so it was estimated to be about $300,000 to more efficiently move departments so that they're not on multiple levels or down the hall, or they're in their respective areas and they can efficiently operate together. $300,000 is a significant amount of money for that, and we want to make sure, one of the things that you alluded to was the unified communication, which is going to allow people to be better connected via their computers and phones and that sort of thing. So that may be handled in that process of allowing more connectivity than actually physically moving someone. So our hesitation is we want to make sure that the investment we're making in IT either covers it or doesn't. If it doesn't, then there's budget dollars to cover what needs to be moved at that point. We don't necessarily want to just spend the $300,000 and go move people and then find out that a different investment may have covered those needs already. So while it may seem like micromanagement, I would classify it under frugal spending of money.
I want to thank the board. I was the only citizen at that committee meeting. I thought some of those volumes had come up, so I don't know if there's anybody else's comments.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Anrude. Commissioner Schulte?
I would just like to make a couple of comments. I think first that it was brought to my attention this morning that it was difficult to find the public notice on the website. And so I think, you know, websites are always a changing thing. It's what they do nonstop. And now that this is brought to our attention, I think we'll work with public information to make sure that those are more prominent. They're there for public notice. We want people to find them. There's nothing secret, so we, I think we'll work towards making sure that that's more prominent. And secondly, it was mentioned that the majority of this $54 million was going to be bonded. That's, it's not accurate. It's a small percentage of the $54 million is bonding. A lot of it is mentioned earlier as grants, and some of it is actually levy dollars, just to clarify.
Thank you, Commissioner Schulte. Any other member of the public wish to come forward at this time? Is there any other member of the public wishes to come forward? Any other comments by the board before I close this public hearing? Commissioner Gamache?
I just wanted to mention, I've had this discussion as well with the sheriff regarding body worn cameras, because I was hoping that he was going to move a little quicker with it, but I understand his concerns that it comes from the legislature. The legislature's been working on the privacy issues with the videotape that's actually taken on those body worn cameras, and they, I don't believe, have really come with a solution as to what is made public and what is not made public, and the sheriff is very concerned about that. And he mentioned it and explained it, and I'm sure if you wanted to talk with him, he'd let you know because he's got a really good explanation, and I kind of agree with him. You run into situations where people are in crisis and the body worn cameras could catch something that we, the people that are in the crisis don't really want to be made public, but they could be based on what it is today. So I think the state legislature has to address this issue, and I think that's what the sheriff is waiting on, and I think Mr. Palumbo made that clear as well. So I'm hoping that in 2017, we could see that, but I agree with the sheriff's idea to wait at least one more year.
Okay. Any other member of the board wish to make? Commissioner Cordiak?
Thank you, and this is a general question. It could be directed to Commissioner Look. In terms of the $300,000 that we have for moving costs, they're soft costs, are they not? They're not real costs for, this is an example of what we're doing internally as we move people and change IT and change room numbers and change phone numbers. These are internalized costs that we may or may not charge some departments within our, as we all pay IT costs and rent costs and other. I don't think, those aren't real costs, those are soft costs that we internalize, as I recall. Can somebody correct that or if I'm wrong?
Commissioner Look, do you wish to address that?
Sure. Commissioner Cordiak, I think some are soft costs, some are structural in terms of, you know, walls and wiring and things of that nature, carpeting. There's talk of different Herman Miller type of, you know, setups there. So there's some hard costs there too, but again, we want to, we want to ensure that investments we have are meeting our needs, and if they're not, then at that point, we can look at additional changes at that point.
Thank you.
Anything additional, Commissioner Look?
Yeah.
Commissioner Look and then Commissioner Cordiak.
Well, I just wanted to comment, I know that the budget is, first of all, it's a budget. It's not a guaranteed expenditure of money. It's kind of our plan of where we think we may be spending money, and we will make sure that there's money available. But just to kind of boil it down a little bit, there's a lot of different line items in here and a lot of costs adding up to the $54 million, as Mr. Anrude said. To boil it down, though, we have $35 million in roads. Some might complain that that's not enough. I know that we're investing significant dollars in our roads. We have invested significant dollars in our roads, and we are, thanks to our road department, transportation department, Doug Fisher, we are catching up with our roads and we're actually in excellent condition there. People disagree in the further outskirts where there's little traffic, but that's part of the plan as well. So 35 million in roads, we have $10 million in our building portion of it. We've found that there's been some deferred maintenance over the years. We've been catching up with that in terms of our elevator upgrades, a state mandate, and parking lots and roofs and everything of that nature. $10 million of that. $7 million is in IT, and that's just keeping up with all the programs that we have to keep up with. Your tax program is very costly. Your unified communication is very costly, and all the management of that, making sure that we are able to better serve our customers, there's $7 million in that, and if you add that up, that's $52 million of the 54 that's been talked about. So these are not unusual expenses, they're not unreasonable expenses, and I don't want to say it's the cost of doing business, but it's the cost of what it's going to take to better serve our county constituents.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cordiak, did you wish to address?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am, County Attorney. Just two things. Commissioner Look, thank you for your comments, but this isn't a budget. This is a projection, responsible organizing, what we think our cost might be, and all of them will be fully vetted throughout this upcoming year. Appreciate that. Secondarily, on the body cam thing, I've seen the list of the issues that are relevant to body cams. They are most complex and affect many people's lives. And while I don't think Anoka County's in the dark ages, and the fact that the decision may or may not be the sheriff's determination, I expect when they were going to move in that direction, but hopefully we'll do it with our eyes wide open and fully positioned to handle the many policy issues that exist around body cams. And I don't think we push them away, we're just trying to be responsible, in my view.
Commissioner, any other comments by members of the board? Okay. Hearing no further comments, at this time, I then would close the public hearing and turn it back to you, ma'am chair.
Thank you very much. We'll move on then to consider adopting the capital improvements plan for 2016 through 2020, including the capital improvements budget for 2016. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
And moved and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Aye.
Commissioner Sevraja?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there anything else to come before the county board? If not, meetings adjourned.